I want to call the regular scheduled October council meeting to order. Thank everyone for coming out and everyone that's being on this online. We'll open up like normal fashion with prayer, followed by prayers of most of Reverend Wood's latest in prayer, please.
Yes, sir. I bow to heaven again, we just bow before you now. God, we just want to thank you for all of your many blessings. So many things that happened since the last time we met. But God, we just thank you even during the storm, you kept us safe. God, we just ask and we pray for those that have have lost so many things during the storm. But we know that you're God and God all by yourself. And we pray oh God that you're blessed to meet you on this night. We just thank you, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Face the flag, looking for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You call the roll, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Golden?
Here.
Mr. Lau?
Here.
Mr. McKinney?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Oh, we have two sets of minutes to approve. One from the special call council meeting in February and also one of the minutes from the regular scheduled council meeting in March. Are there any changes or anything though to those minutes? All right, is, are we up, can we take those at the same time as our motion to approve?
I make the motion.
I'm second.
Motion from Mr. Lau on the second to approve the minutes from the February special call council meeting and the March regular scheduled council meeting. If you will catch your votes.
I think I got it bad, and next time, there you go.
Motion carried. I'll move on to the mayor's report. Want to thank everyone that came out to the charity ball on Saturday and all the council members that couldn't come. Few y'all called, made donations and stuff, thank y'all for that. And all the employees that helped put that event on as well as the sponsors. I want to thank all of the, see, every department that came and helped Grand Junction in the storms last week. We worked out there for about a week straight, so every department that was out there, thank y'all so much for coming for that. And continue to be praying for Grand Junction as well as Selmer as they continue to rebuild. They got a long road ahead of them, so. Also want to say, and I think Darren probably mentioned this some, but the flooding and the blow, I say the, the cover that went out on Tate Road. And if you guys have been by Polk Street, South Polk Street, there's been a, a, the retaining wall that has failed over there from the flood as well. So thank, with a little work, we're gonna be able to get that covered through FEMA. It's a lot of paperwork and Darren and so, so some of them are working with us going through that process to get the reimbursement on the cost of repairs. It's, it's gonna be a pretty extensive, it has been a pretty extensive repair on Tate Road as well as Polk Street. But after the rain came through and the storms, everything that they done, I think probably if not undone, close to it, they had to redo all this. So we'll be working through that on the repairs out there on Tate Road as well as Polk Street. Want to put, you guys to put on your calendar, on May fifth, I would like to have a, won't be a council meeting, but it'll be a public meeting as well as a community input meeting. We should have the final numbers and plans back for the YMCA and sports play. So on May fifth at six P M., like you guys to come. We're gonna have representatives from YMCA, engineers, USDA, all of those individuals will be here to present that to us at six. And then at six thirty immediately following that, we'll have that same presentation for the community. If anybody would like to come and put in some input on that. So that's May fifth at six P M. City offices will be closed on April eighteenth, this Friday, for Good Friday. A spring, uh, spring fling will be held on the twenty-sixth. So you got an update from Main Street, they sent, we're thrilled to announce the return of the Spring Fling and Food Truck Festival for the second year, bigger and better. Let's kick off the season, and we're moving the event to coincide with the opening day of the Bolivers Forum, Bolivers Farmers Market, which is April the twenty-sixth, to expand the festival. There'd be a collaboration between the Master Gardeners Plant Sale, the Food Truck Festival, and Arts and Crafts Market. Entertainment will feature many different performances, the high school band, nothing but, the Nothing But Fancy Band. I've already hit the capacity of twelve food trucks and more than thirty vendors have registered, so looking for a good turnout on that. So I ask all the council members to come out, Boliver Farmers Market on the twenty-sixth from eight to six, and enjoy the Spring Fling. Also, Mayor Pulse asked if he could have a few minutes here on our meeting, so I'll turn it over to him. I don't know if he got a song or what he got for us, but.
Yeah, didn't bring him a guitar. Honorable Mayor, honorable Vice Mayor, honorable Councilman, I appreciate this, thank you for the time. And I just want to say special thank you to what y'all did for the people of Grand Junction. It was probably the worst disaster we've had in our county in recent years that I know of. I was on the phone in the middle of the night to, to Mayor Smith. He already had a courthouse full of people because the apartment complex had already been destroyed there. We were constantly on the phone, of course Sheriff Doolin and of course EMA team that we have, wonderful team with Darren Grantham, Assistant Director and Don Taylor, our Director. A lot going on with our county, EF three, hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty miles an hour. Talked to Mayor McTisick early and he said, Mayor, what do you need? Didn't hesitate whatsoever. Think about that.
Yeah.
Those people were in need, he said, what do you need? We'll take care of it, right on it, I appreciate you. Appreciate what everybody did to come together, to be together. Chris Williams brought in so many supplies for the people. They're still hurting, they still have a lot to do there, but the cleanup effort is going to be massive, it's gonna take a while. Luckily, we did not have any fatalities in our county. Of course, they did in McNary and they did in Fayette. But, but, but thank the Lord we didn't have any here. But just thank you for what all of you have done to help these people and, because it's our people, we're all here together. You know, it's not a different team, we're all on the same team. And I appreciate it as, as a citizen and as the mayor of this county that I love. Thank you sincerely, appreciate what you did, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And, and real quick, thank you to the, the great teams. Jerry Mayfield was there with the team, with the city. Chief Price was there with the firemen, thank you for what they did. Everybody was cutting, moving limbs, trying to get people out. And, and thank you Chief for coming down and cooking for folks the other day. But it was just so good to see people working together, so again, thank you, and I hope I didn't take up too much time.
No, good call. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, let's, we'll turn it over to Darren from the Hardeman County EMA.
Mayor, what he said there, that the, that the wall in Polk is gonna be covered by FEMA, what about Tate Road, is there any chance we can get that covered?
Yeah, both of them, we're trying to get both of them.
Okay, both of them, okay, gotcha, I'm sorry, missed that.
And to echo Mayor Pulse, I, again, every department, even the, man, the county was closed the day of the storm and everybody else, and all them brought food and they all, every, every employee, everybody that came and helped, every department was out there and Jim them had a big leak gas leak too. It was a, it was a nightmare, but everybody worked together and didn't hesitate, so. Thank you, Mayor Pulse, for what you're doing and we keep praying for Grand Junction. All right, Mr. Darren, go.
Evening Mayor and the council. Darren Grantham, Deputy Director of Hardeman County Emergency Management. And as you know, we've dealt with a lot of stuff with the Grand Junction area. We had a lot that went on out at Lake Vonda area as well. We had two different tornadoes that come through Hardeman County that night. The first one that went through was south of Middleton, that was the one that went through Selmer. The one that come through Grand Junction, once it got toward the Hornsby area, it kind of fizzled out. But I'm here tonight, I want to thank Mayor for what you came and done. No hesitation, first thing he came up, he asked, he said, Darren, what can I do? I said, well, we need to get this road opened up to where we can deter the traffic. Never heard nothing else from him, he came back, he's, Darren, I got the road open. Thank you, Mayor, you're in your team. But I'm here tonight from, actually from TEMA has asked Hardeman County to present this to all of the councils, all fire departments, I've been to fire departments and everything. And this is all concerning the NIMS program, it's National Incident Management System. And FEMA is a sponsor of this. And FEMA requires everyone that's on this list here to be NIMS certified and in compliance. I want to read this off to you. NIMS training is required under the Homeland Security Presidential Directive, HSPD five, to receive federal funding, grants, training, and reimbursements of disaster recovery. Personnel must attend the trainings on the IS role. And I've separated it out here, what all the council will have to do and the mayor. But under this federal, state, local, private sector, non-governmental organization and personnel, this includes emergency medical services, firefighting, healthcare and hospitals, law enforcement, public health, public information, which that is your dispatch, public works and utilities. So this kind of gets everybody that's involved in the city and in the county. That works anything to do with your sewer lines, your water lines, anything in a disaster. Other emergency management response support and volunteer personnel level at all levels. The one that I presented to y'all here, you will have to take, it's what they call IS nine zero eight. That is a NIMS class for elected officials that, and I want to read this off here too. Federal, state, local, private sector, non-governmental organizations personnel. Governors, if you look on that bottom left sector, it says governors, county executives, mayors, city managers, agency administrators, and other elected or appointed senior officials who have jurisdictional authority, responsibilities or oversight, over response, and support operations during an emergency. Now, this here, I have spoke with TEMA, because we have had some questions on this about the secretary or the recorders. The actual, every little town in Hardeman County's got its own bylaws and they go by. So it depends on your bylaws and regulations of how you actually state your recorder or secretary, whether she has to have this or not. The, if she is not, it makes any kind of the decision during an emergency, she does not have to have it. Or none of the council will have to have it as long as they don't make no kind of decision in any kind of emergency. If you're not present, who's gonna take your place? If it goes down the list, TEMA recommends that the whole council be NIM certified. If, if you get any kind of FEMA money, whether it's a fire truck through the fire department, whether it's the city streets like we're working on now, anything you get from a federal grant, they're gonna call and do an audit, if they do an audit. If it's eight evidence on the roster, all eight has to be NIM certified. They can deny that federal money from you. If you've got a fire truck or whatever you purchased with federal grant money, if you're not NIM certified, they will require you to pay that money back to them. So this is, and after everything that has went on this past week and a half, this is, I think, kind of stands for itself, we all need to be in compliance. I did actually, for two days, I was with actual TEMA and FEMA personnel. First day we did the IAs, that's individual assistance. We went around and did all of the assess, damage assessments on all the houses. The second day was with TEMA and FEMA. We came around and we actually, I brought them to Polk Street and looked at that. And then I carried them over to Tate Road and had them to look at that also. From my understanding and coming from the FEMA personnel, they thought like it was a good thing that, you know. So this is kind of, takes about an hour to do it, but we kind of like for everybody to be in compliance and get this IS nine oh eight.
Just online.
You can get this online, yes, the IS.
Can you send us that information where we can forward it out to all the council members?
Oh, yes, it's on that paper I should have sent you there, it's a, should be, you can go to FEMA.gov. It may not be on that paper, FEMA.gov, emergency, NIMS, N-I-M-S. And then you'll first have to set up a student ID. If you go in and try to take this, what, uh, class and exam, it's gonna kick you out. First go in, set up a student ID number. Once you set that student ID number up, it will let you take that class then. Once you take it, you pass it, Mayor can keep y'all's records, we don't need it. The only time we will need anything is if federal government asks us to do an audit on the county here. Then they will contact Don or I, and then we will come to y'all and ask, we need your certificates and your roster to, to match up to show that everybody is in compliance. Other than that, that's basically all I got, if y'all got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
You said FEMA.gov, what?
FEMA.gov. And it's emergency, and then I believe it forward slash NIMS. That should carry you to the classes that you'll need.
Well, I did care about to send that.
Now, the fire departments and all the personnel, like the city streets and all of them, they will have to have, it's called a, uh, NIMS one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred, and eight hundred. That is required also. And they have to have the, that one, two, seven, and eight before they can take the three hundred or four hundred. The three hundred and four hundred is about three, about four days long, and it's classroom only. That's for your top two officials that's in each director's position of the city. We are working with TEMA because we have such a small town, we cannot pull all of, say Middleton and Grand Junction to. We can't have all of them to go to Jackson and their area is not covered. So what we're gonna try to do is get a class down here, maybe centralized in the city here. That way they can also come up here and take this class in the county instead of them having to go to Memphis or Jackson or somewhere like that to take this class.
All right, any other questions for them?
Did you say the certification comes out once you finish the class?
Yes, it comes out, you can, you can print your certificate out.
They, they, they give you the certification.
Yeah, you can, you can print your certification out and you can just give, give the mayor a copy of it. And then that way he's got it on record that, yes, you know, Mr. Larry, you do have, you've completed your nine oh eight.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll be sure to, we'll get them links and out to y'all, y'all will make sure we get all that done. Thank you so much, Mayor, sir, appreciate you what you do for Hardeman County. I'm sorry, go ahead.
There's not really a time limit on this, of course, this has been going on for twenty plus years.
Right.
Something like that. Anyway, we, we got ours twenty years ago when it first came out, right after nine eleven. And it kind of went away there for a while, but once it came, but once the hurricane Helene hit East Tennessee and North Carolina, that was, if you seen a lot on about the social medias, wasn't getting along with TEMA's and FEMA's and all that, it was a big controversy. That's what it was, it was FEMA, when FEMA came in, they wanted everybody that had the NIMS to stay there and work. Anybody that didn't have NIM certification, they didn't, they didn't want them on their work. That would have been the same way as in Grand Junction. If, if it had really gotten, you know, FEMA came in earlier and it was such a big process like East Tennessee or North Carolina, a lot of departments, if you're not certified, you wouldn't actually get to do anything in that department, for that department, or receive any funding. It was a lot of, a lot of rescue squads, a lot of fire departments back up in them areas that had several thousand hours combined in their department. They're not gonna get nothing because they didn't, they weren't NIM certified. So we hate to see that, that's the reason TEMA has asked us to present this to all the people in the county that has anything to do with emergency services, to get them in compliance to where if something happens, it'll just roll on. It won't be no hesitation on it.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Grantham, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wood, uh, thank you for all you do for the county and thank you for all the work on Tate Road over here. All right, any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Johnny Nelson.
All right, Mr. Nelson?
Lots of good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilman. Good to be here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm here for the reason of wondering, had there been any progress on the sign that go on Naylor Street and Hayesburg Street?
Yes, sir, well, as soon as they come in, we gonna get it up.
And we do that.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
So we'll have to come back next month.
Uh, if the sign is here, you won't have to come back, if it's not, come back and see us next month.
I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
I know you've been real busy and I just, you get my age, you lose track of time.
Right.
It seems like it's been a long time.
I know.
You're all the joy, it might not have been long.
All right.
But when you get eighty-six and all of that, I'm gonna, time ain't the same as it used to be. Same appreciate you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thanks for doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. That's all. All right, moving to standing committee reports on the electric. The board appointed Hannah Swift as Secretary and Treasurer, she will be taking this Tamar Fitz position due to her retirement on the fiber update, forty-four percent take rate, total customers of forty-seven hundred. That concludes the electric report, moving on to utilities, Mr. Knuckles.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Utility Board met April second and we discussed the following, we've been assisting Jerry with the street department and with sync the cave-in at Tate Road, we've got pipelines that we had to back up and kill. We, we're gonna have to replace a truck that was in a wreck two months ago, we're still in negotiating on that. Gas contracts are still being negotiated, I got a resolution emailed. I'm gonna have to take it to the board and then I'll bring it to you all on that, our purchasing on our new contract. And Alstug Val down here at Lauderdale Tank, it's complete, job went really good. The guy saved a lot of money doing it ourselves, a lot of money. Gas prices for April is seventy-six cents.
Thank you, Mr. Knuckles.
Thank you.
I got it, uh, Mr. Knuckles.
Yes.
Uh, on the utility truck that was wrecked, could you elaborate on that some, what?
Yes, sir, we had a.
Make sure about is okay?
Yeah, everybody's okay, we still got a guy that's, uh, and he's did a MRI, the eighth, won't know till the twenty-second. We got hit out here on one twenty-five one morning when he was turning into the driveway and the guy hit him. And, uh, of course, we can't do anything, we've got the truck in possession, but until all the legalities are finished and stuff. But yeah, the, the other driver, he, they airlifted him, but I think he's okay, yeah. And he had some kids in there too. But he just, he, my understanding was he passed the line of cars, you know, six or eight or ten cars flying. Our guy was turning left and he was passing, but we won't know, our, our guys, uh, he, he has a little neck issue, but it's supposed to be resolved, hopefully we'll know the twenty-second.
Okay, all right, glad everybody was okay.
Oh, yes.
I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Knuckles, uh, Fire Chief Price?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My report, total fire call ninety-one, I had seventy-six in the city, fifteen in the county. Sixty-three, sixty-three them call was medical assist with EMS. Training hours, we had three hundred fifty-four training hours, smoke alarm install was a hundred and thirty-four. And that's when we went out, we had a canvas a couple of weeks ago, we pulled up a bunch of smoke alarms, took a bunch of old smoke alarm down. Fire codes, inspection, we had fifteen, public relation two. Mr. Darren talking about NIMS, the fire department is in compliant with NIM. We have, I have my three hundred and four hundred, that mean we can get into, and we can go into anywhere with operation or this and that with three and four hundred. Have one of my lieutenant have it, I got two guys coming up in June gonna be taking there, they officer too, they will be having, my officer had to have three and four hundred, that's in my report.
Chief, Chief Price, on the training hours, three hundred fifty-four, can you elaborate on what that?
That is training out combined with paid guys, volunteers, we total all the hours together. So that come, that's get you your three hundred and fifty-four hours. And plus they had a forty-hour training class for, I think with EMR class, so that's another, that's, you know, you got three guys in NIMS that forty-eighties, you know, hundred and twenty hours right there.
Hundred and twenty, thank you.
Yes. Anything else?
Thank you, Chief. Next, Police Chief Jones.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My report is as follows, six hundred and seven calls for service, a hundred and ninety-four citations, twenty-two accidents, eight were injured, fourteen property damage, only sixty-two arrests, four were juveniles, fifty-eight adults, special events, we did fourteen shifts of a task force and three hundred and sixty training hours. That concludes my report, any questions?
Chief Jones, can you give us a, uh, update on the THSO task force, how's everything going with it, is it going smooth or?
Uh, it's going fine, we've seized over sixteen thousand dollars cash, I cannot give you total number of guns, production of tickets and arrests are out to route, have arrested a lot on drug warrants and a lot on warrants, period, and some old warrants that have been in what you call outstanding, so it's going really well.
Awesome, awesome. I know we had a shooting over in East Bolivar, I guess a few weeks ago, I think the mayor reached out to us, told us about it, but, uh, the cameras really came in, um.
Yes, with the cameras, after the shooting, we got the time, the cameras picked up a description of a car, found out what time it came in, town, when it left, Jackson PD got in pursuit of it, chased it to Madison County, out the three-way, it came back to Hardeman County, chased it to Chester County, went to Fisher County, our way back out to Marlin where it totaled in Marlin. Kind of found out the car had been stolen from Germantown. One guy was in custody at the accident, the other guy we're still looking for. So, yeah, because of the cameras, didn't take no time.
That's awesome, I just want to point that out, just so everyone could, could know, those cameras, I mean, they, they are a lifesaver, especially when, you can't be everywhere at one time, but those cameras.
Yeah, that's true, we got them for evidence, because it's hard to get people to, but them guys, and I've got guys that can work miracle with them cameras, that's all I can tell you.
Really appreciate that, thank you, thank you.
Can you, uh, Chief, can you elaborate on the training hours, is that the in-service for the officers? Is that included in there, is that what that three hundred and six hours training?
Uh, three hundred and six.
Because I think it's about time for in-service, ain't it?
Well, we have till December to do our in-service.
Right.
Some of that is where officer might do training for the academy. I had four that did, uh, like a specialized training where we did a firearms instructors class here, that would be included in there. But that's where our officers did training, it might not be all in-service, it could be where somebody goes to CIT training. But it's all training that might be above just the regular in-service.
Right. On, uh, Mr. Williams, I just want to agree with him on the cameras.
Yes, sir.
It, it was him. agree with him on the, uh, cameras. It's, it's, it, it was, have been worth its money.
Yes, sir, it has.
I have to say that much. Thank y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Jones.
Thank you.
Next, Parks and Rec, Mr. Ford.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Parks and Recreation report on the following. Uh, we've ordered some new LED floodlights. The flag out there on sixty-four, uh, must be illuminated at night, so the LED lights were out. And we got that repaired on the end of last week. Our youth basketball, uh, fifteen through eighteen, eighteen-year-old league, their registration ends on the eighteenth of this month. And we've begun our search for some possible lifeguards and, uh, pool manager for this summer for our city pool. And lastly, our, uh, eleven through fourteen-year-old league ended on April first. It was a competitive and good league and everything went well.
Motion, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Ford, is the, uh, pool holding up so far?
Uh, we're gonna see. We're working hard to, uh, get the pump repaired and, uh, we're not able to get it replaced, but we're trying to suck up all the chips and and the thing and, and hopefully the whole water.
Gosh, awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next, Streets and Sanitation, Mr. Mayfield.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Department Head of Public, Jerry Mayfield, uh, Streets and Sanitation. This is my report. We had, uh, three hundred and three point three-three tons of commercial. We had a hundred thirty-seven point oh-two tons of residential, four hundred and forty point three-five total tons of trash. Uh, we done, we've been working on the sinkhole on Tate Road quite religiously ever since it happened. Uh, we've assisted in the, uh, cleanup in Grand Junction with the tornado and everything, and we are still doing the bulky items for the month of April, along with everything else.
Behind Walmart looks really good. Looks a lot better.
Do what?
Behind Walmart looks a lot better.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks a lot better. They came through, I think, twice. Looks a lot better.
I think, uh, Chief may have something to do with that too.
Yeah, it looks better.
And Ricky's.
Looks a lot better.
Good deal, good deal.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayfield. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot the asphalt bid. We just got one. This is from Fowler Paving.
What is this for?
Street, asphalt for the streets.
In, in the streets in particular?
Uh, yeah, he'll, he has a list. Uh, he's been waiting on me to go through all of them and we'll see.
Just the neighborhood streets?
Yeah. City streets.
City streets, yes. Yeah.
Um, one thirty-four tonne asphalt to lay it, um, and we do, what, one fifty? I think we got a hundred fifty thousand in the budget. And what we usually do is pour until we can get all one fifty used up. So, we try to, we'll pick same amount of streets on east and west if we can to even it out and get some, so he has a list already. We're gonna probably ride through one day this weekend. Find out and then we'll pay, uh, if this bid is accepted, they'll start probably what, wait on us.
Wait on us, yeah, pretty much.
We have not one bid?
Guess what?
That's all we got this time.
Thing, thing about these streets are you could pave a half million dollars worth of streets and you would still have some that you're gonna run across and say, which, these need to be done too.
Right.
I don't think-
You can't do them all.
You can't do them all. Some are on, I guess, fifteen, twenty-year, you know, I mean, time, you know, redo them again, so-
Right.
We have so many roads and, I mean, a hundred fifty, I mean, touches some of it, but it's not gonna touch all of it. After we get done doing this, come August, we're gonna write down some and be like, these needed too. So, gotta prioritize them.
What needed worse is Highway sixty-four and they finally gonna do that thing. Goodness, that's just a state rep.
Yeah.
Right.
I make a motion we approve.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a motion by Mr. Ray to approve the bid from Fowler, second by Mr. La, I'm sorry, Mr. McKenney. If you would cash your votes. And we Fowler's a good company. We've been using them for years.
Will you give us the list of the roads that are gonna be paved?
I, I-
I mean, not, not now, but I mean, can you give us?
Yeah, I'll have to give, like I said, me and, me and Mr. Ray.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayfield. Uh, on the library report, I'll sort of give you our update. Miss, uh, Jessica, uh, took another job working somewhere else, I guess, last month. Um, and we wish her well. And Ms. Becky, the previous director is, the board has stepped, the board has approved her as the interim director for, that we, that, Chris, y'all have a time?
Not really. She's just interim, I think, until-
Until they, uh, make a, a full-time position on it. But right now, uh, Ms. Becky is serving an interim role as director. So, we wish Ms. Jessica well in her future endeavors. And, um, also, there's an opening for assistant director, which, which was the role that Ms. Becky had, um, which Ms. Becky was the director previously before Jessica came on. So, now the, her position that she has is open. Um, so if anybody wanna apply for that or wanna share that with the citizens, let them know that position is open. But the library report is in here and once we make a, um, the board makes a decision, we'll let you guys know on it.
Just food for thought. When Ms. Becky left before, it wasn't any ill will or anything. She had some family issues that were, that she had going on. And, uh, so she stepped away to take care of that. And, uh, so, just, everybody's wondering why she's back.
Uh, um, Mr., you have the zoning compliance report. Mr. Watkins is at a conference this week out of town. Uh, Tourism, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, Council. Uh, you have my report there. Uh, met with a representative with the Mid-South Shriners. They have interest in holding a Shriners Carnival, uh, in Bolliver. Not exactly sure of the location yet. We discussed that if they did it, it's somewhere like Sand Beach Lake or downtown like we do, uh, in the fall, that we would, they would go through us, but if it is at the fairgrounds, they would use, uh, the county fair board. So, they were gonna go back and meet and discuss that and, uh, but I do believe that they are looking heavily at Bolliver for that. Um, completed a small business support call with Retail Strategies. Uh, we have been awarded a grant, uh, through the Economic and Community Development, uh, Department at the state. And we're gonna be putting out some information for our local businesses that are already in business. Uh, just some, for lack of a better term, some in-service hours for them, some, some, uh, continuing education opportunities for them through, uh, Retail Strategies. So, that's gonna be coming down the pipe soon. Uh, we hosted, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, uh, Big Gun ACDC was a sold-out show at the Louis Theater. This month's show, uh, fell amongst the, uh, storm, so we postponed it. Uh, we're working with the three songwriters out of Nashville now, uh, to try to, um, get that rescheduled. May not have the exact same three that we had before, but we will have this show and honor the tickets that were sold.
Thank you, Mr. George.
Thank you.
All right, move on.
Mr. Mayor, I do have something. I've been waiting until the, uh, uh, Standing Committee reports was over. But I think on behalf of, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna say at least, on behalf of the city council, we do appreciate the mayor and department heads, employees that went down to Grand Junction. I wanted to say thank you and I'm quite sure that the council would concur with me that we do appreciate y'all helping out down in Grand Junction. So, I didn't want that to go, go unnoticed that we didn't appreciate it also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenney. All right, next, moving on to old business, a resolution of twenty-two-five-zero-zero-seven. Resolution authorizing the purchase of goods and services under the NASPO Value Point Cooperative Purchasing Program. Uh, what that is, is for the fire department on their, uh, buying that, what kind, what kind of truck was it? The, was it a Pumper or a?
Engineer.
The engineer. We, we got a CBDG grant and we're, uh, approving this purchase so we can get it directly from them, um, on that, on that new fire truck that hopefully we can get within the next two years. But we, has that, have they started building it yet, see?
No, no, they can't move to. Y'all do what you got.
Okay, so we still going through the grant process then? All right, but that's what that resolution is.
I make the motion we approve.
I second. I have a motion, uh, motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. La.
Through the, uh, city has to pay anything on this. Has it put in any money?
It was a C-
Most of it, grant, most of it's-
I think it's like a five percent maybe.
Okay, okay.
Motion, Carrick. All right, that's all we have on the old business. Uh, moving on to new business. Uh, have Ms. Ruby here from West Tennessee Healthcare. We, um, excited about what they're doing in Bolliver and happy to have a longstanding relationship with them. And now that we've gotten contracts signed and legal stuff out the way where we can have this discussion, um, excited to have her here. So, we asked if they would come and they, I think they send the best person from West Tennessee Healthcare.
I keep telling them that. If you notice, I'm smiling. I've been here in Bolliver for almost twenty-six years with the hospital now. And I dream over at the hospital and the staff has always been to get a new hospital. So, uh, with, um, grant funding from the state and West Tennessee Healthcare investment in the community, we are now deep in the process of designing and getting architectural drawings for the hospital. Actually, we had a set of drawings, but what we are doing is when we design hospitals, we bring in the staff to let them sit down and look at what the original blueprint looked like, and then they tell us what's wrong with it. So, we are in the process of that. We've been in it for about a month now with nursing. Somebody from every department is sitting down. And this week, we got three more days where they're gonna actually look at equipment, measure it, decide how big a rooms we need, um, and what else we need to think about we're putting in this hospital. Uh, I will tell you, it is smaller in footprint than the old hospital. And that was one of the problems with the old hospital. It was designed when you had surgery and OB and critical care. And we were spending a lot of money just for upkeep for those units, uh, to be certified by joint commission in the state every year. So, what we will have now is as far as patient rooms, we have six inpatient room. Everybody knows we got nine ED rooms now, which is the busiest part of the hospital. So, we're gonna expand that to twelve rooms. Um, we will have all the outpatient services that we have now, radiology lab, um, cardiac rehab, physical therapy, pharmacy. And all of those would be moved to the front of the hospital, so patients don't have to travel all the way through the hospitals to get there. It would be real convenient for them to come in. Um, we are hoping to get finished with design and to be able to submit everything to the state by June. Get approval from the state by the end of July maybe. And then we'll be ready for groundbreaking, hopefully. And, um, what we're looking at is hopefully completion date would be by winter of twenty-six. So, um, we are always open to questions from the city council, uh, anybody that wanna talk to us. Uh, the architects and the team is coming down to Bolliver, uh, in the near future, like in the next few days, to sit down here and look at what we have now. And, um, we are continuously spending lots of time with this design, so it'll fit the community. Um, and as soon as we get conceptual drawings for the outside, um, we'll be sharing the blueprint and the drawings for the outside with the mayor and the city council. We do appreciate everything and all the support we are getting from the city and all the citizens of Hardeman County on this. And you just don't know what the morale is like over at the hospital, just knowing that we, what we got to look forward to.
Any questions for Ms. Ruth?
Ms. Ruth, uh, did you say there's not gonna be any surgery there? They probably have to go to Jackson.
Yes, sir.
They're not having it here in Bolliver, so you-
No, wait. Surgery, we haven't done surgery at Bolliver for about twenty years, yeah. And OB was closed.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, long time ago. So, we will keep all the services we have now. And, you know, as the community grows and services, uh, are demanded, it's our history that usually then West Tennessee will come back in and evaluate and maybe add on new services that we can support.
Okay. What about, uh, will they add in the old doctor on your staff?
Um, probably. The way it will work is we have ED doctors and then we have hospitalists. So, those can be rotated out to a team. Hospitalists usually only see patients in the hospital. Now, what we know is history. Usually when you get a new hospital in the community, independent physicians are more likely to come into your community and open up practices. Because they see you got a hospital, you're committed to the community, and they're more likely to come.
Any other questions, Ms. Ruth?
How, how many patient rooms would it be?
Six.
Six, okay.
Six patient rooms.
Oh, okay, six.
And then twelve ED rooms.
We really appreciate West Tennessee Healthcare, Healthcare's commitment and investment in Bolliver, Hardeman County really shows the commitment. Y'all been around a long time and we really do appreciate it, uh, the partnership between y'all and the city. Um, we look forward to it.
We appreciate, uh, the, you know, we always get a lot of support from the city, uh, and we really appreciate the city and the councilman and, you know, all the citizens of Bolliver and the surrounding communities.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And as I say, um, thank y'all. I know when every other hospital closed, I had a lot of conversation with Ms. Ruth. At the time, Mr. Ross, uh, and they both committed to staying open and they did and, and they staying open now, building a new hospital. So, it means a lot. So, thank you so much and just, let's keep supporting them and, and keep them here as long as they wanna be here.
Yeah, we blessed to have, blessed to have.
Well, thank you. The rest of the, um, leadership at West Tennessee Healthcare is committed to this community. And after Mr. Ross expired, um, one of your own came into, uh, that position, Ms. Tina Prescott, who used to be Tina Lanier. So, we have the pleasure of working with her and she is exec, she's as excited as I am.
Well, I know she, she's called, talked to me a lot about it too. Well, this, this is home for her.
Yeah, that, this is home for her. It is home for her.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ruth. And if you need anything from us, let us know and we look forward to, uh, continue the community, the relationship in the community with you.
And again, if you have any questions, just call me. I'm available anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, I have the first reading of ordinance twenty-five-zero-zero-four. Ordinance amended the official zoning map of Bolliver for a property located at five-fifty Vildor Road from B-one to H-one. Uh, that's the property that the hospital is going on. The planning commission sends this ordinance with a positive recommendation to rezone that property from business B-one to H-one. We have to read this once, we have to pass it this ordinance, uh, on this reading and then we'll have to have a public hearing on it next month. Um, so, there's any questions, anything? All right, if not, there are a motion to approve.
So, move second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKenney and a second by Mr. Williams, is it?
Yeah.
Uh, to approve ordinance twenty-five-zero-zero-four to amend the zoning map from B-one to H-one. Motion, Carrick. Next, we have resolution twenty-five, twenty-two-five-zero-zero-five, resolution authorizing some middle of recreational trail grant. This is just, uh, uh, to apply for this grant, have to have this resolution passed. What this would be is to asphalt the existing trail around, uh, Sand Beach Lake from, uh, the gravel that's there, the outer trail around it. Um, it's three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars is the total for the project, um, and the match would be ninety-eight thousand. Oh, in the event that we were to get the grant, uh, that would be our match. But before we apply, we have to have this resolution passed saying that if we would get it, then we would provide that match. And also, I'll just tell y'all, once we do this, our plan was to also do Pleasant Run too. Um, it just put it over budget, so we, once this is complete, I would like to see us, uh, do Pleasant Run as well too. But, but this is just the first step.
Make a motion we approve.
I say.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty, twenty-five-zero-zero-five. There was motion by Mr. Gold and a second by Mr. Ray. Motion, Pat, yes, sir.
Go with yours, third.
I was just gonna say motion, Pat.
Okay, I was just waiting for you. I didn't mean to cut y'all, I'm sorry. What about the, uh, walking trail that runs down, uh, by, uh, the, I don't know, the, uh-
If you're talking about the port, uh, if you're talking about-
Yeah, from the park, park, uh.
We're gonna put that in the budget to reduce some of those sections.
Yeah, 'cause I know it's some of it's bad shape.
Not just there, but in a lot of the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Uh, gonna cut, identify some sections, pouring that concrete is, is cheaper to get a full load
Yeah.
than just one little section, so we got some spots. Not just that one, but some sidewalks too that we gonna-
Okay, okay.
Uh, repair. All right, moving on to resolution twenty, twenty-five-zero-zero-six. Uh, what this is, is our code book, when they do the codification, M-TAS does that, and it's, ours is due to be recoded, uh, and basically just- And it's, ours is due to be recoded uh and basically just reprint it with all the updated ordinances and uh and do changes that we've made. What I wanna do is go ahead and pass this resolution now, just because they have a long wait. Is it, how long was it until you? Um at least a year, if not longer, um so we can get in the, we can get on the waiting list. Um and what we will do is if we make any uh charter changes or anything like that between now and next year, we can already be on the waiting list, so once it's time for us to do that, we've already in line and we can get this uh done. So we have to have this resolution saying that uh we wanna hire M-TAS to do that, to redo our our code.
Read the motion.
Uh was you gonna ask a question?
Uh-huh.
All right, go ahead. Go, hold on one second. Let's, we can add a question.
The uh um I know we was talking about doing some changes in the charter after the election, so we'll still have time to.
Right, yeah, so this won't actually be, yeah, this won't be, we won't be doing it, doing it. We'll be getting on the waiting list to do it. And by the time we get to that point, then we won't have to wait a year, two years, yes.
Okay.
Any other changes that we make, that we have made in the last, I think it's ten, has it been ten years? The last ten years will be in there as well as anything up until the time they plan.
Okay, thank you.
Well, any other questions? All right, motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. La. Was it? Oh, Mr. Gold, sorry. Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Gold. If you would cash your votes. All right, motion here. Next, we have the approval of board members from DEFCO. We have uh two different sets. Excuse me, they have three new members that they would like to add. Brad Kessler, Jeff Schockford, Willie Spencer, and reappointment of Jack Valle, Calvin Howe, Scott Lebitter, Mike Miller, Mayor Topples, Bobby Sane, Rashad Smith, and Daryl Tubman. Uh those were submitted at the last DEFCO meeting. And once those minutes are approved, I'll have that update as well, but those, they asked for some middle of those to be reappointed to the DEFCO board.
Now, the new members, uh ha- first of all, how many members uh supposed to be on the DEFCO?
I think they can have up to twelve, I think.
They can have up to twelve. How many do they have now?
Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Myself is nine.
Nine.
Uh yeah, I think it's nine.
Nine, and these three will make twelve, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I didn't know for sure.
Are there a motion to approve the mem- motion by Ms. Ray, second by Mr. Williams, if you would cash your vote. Motion here. If there's nothing else, there are motion we adjourn. Motion by Mr. McKenna, a second.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Williams, all in favor, say aye. Any a poll?